I'd like to call this regular city council meeting, the May 2nd, 2019, to order. Would you please call the roll?
Isom?
Here.
Bergeron?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Kifer?
Here.
Zingin?
Here.
Flora?
Here.
Kuse? Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Under communications, we have some items laid on the table. One is in regards to the Royal Order of Moose. One is request to withdraw item 7A1. There's a lot 7A2 that was laid on the table. A letter from Renee Schofield related to the marijuana issue. And we had a lay on the table, it's a resolution from the Ketchikan Indian Community supporting Tobacco 21. Plus, we have before the proclamation, and I'll read that at this time. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse has reached epidemic stages nationwide, and whereas the impact of mental health and substance abuse disorders is continuing to challenge for Ketchikan, and whereas it is imperative that visible and unified prevention education efforts by community members continue to be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the Substance Abuse Task Force in Ketchikan has joined the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration to participate in the National Prevention Week efforts, and whereas the focus of the National Prevention Week is to prevent substance abuse, promote mental health, and celebrate the achievements of prevention organizations and individuals. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Robert Seaberton, Mayor of City of Ketchikan, do hereby recognize May 12th through the 18th, 2019, as National Prevention Week. And call upon the community to observe this week with compelling programs and events that support this year's theme, inspiring action and changing lives. Is there anybody here to receive the proclamation? Who receives?
Thank you guys so much for this. I just have a little something that we were going to read here. My name's Danielle Duckworth. I'm on the Substance Abuse Task Force and I work at Residential Youth Care. So National Prevention Week is a nationally recognized program, and this is just going to tell you a little bit about it. Substance use and mental health problems affect all communities nationwide. According to the 2017 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, an estimated 30.5 million Americans aged 12 and older are current illicit drug users. Nearly 7.4 million young people report drinking alcohol in the past month, and about 1 in 5 Americans ages 12 and older smoke cigarettes. Additionally, in 2017, 11.1 million Americans misused pain relievers, and for more than half of them, the last pain reliever they misused came from a friend or a relative. According to the 2015 and 2017 Youth Risk Behavior Survey taken by Ketchikan high schoolers, the impact of mental health and substance use disorders is a continuing challenge for our community. It is estimated that 36% of youth have seriously considered attempting suicide, and 10% of them have actually attempted it. Those statistics are unfortunately expected to have an upward trend in the outcomes of the 2019 data that's not yet been released. While some of the previous year's results show decreases in tobacco, drug, and alcohol use, we have a long way to go in regards to the perception of risk regarding marijuana, vaping, and drinking alcohol. We have the power to change these numbers and, more importantly, to change lives. With commitment and support, these and other substance use and mental health issues can be prevented. The focus of National Prevention Week this May is to prevent substance use and promote mental health, and to celebrate the achievements of prevention organizations and individuals across the nation. This year's National Prevention Week theme, Inspiring Action, Changing Lives, reminds us that we can all inspire positive change throughout the year. Every day and everywhere, whether we make healthy choices for ourselves or inspire others to do so, the small actions we take can change lives for the better. Taking part in prevention-related activities and conversations helps raise awareness for mental health and substance use issues and changing lives. That's a message that we need to spread far and wide. In honor of National Prevention Week, the Substance Abuse Task Force is attempting to raise awareness by educating youth with local statistics during their morning announcements at KHI and Chombar, recording substance-related PSAs for local radio, and participating in daily interviews on First City Forum regarding the prevention topics of each of those days for the entire week. We're also teaching some prevention education at Revilla. Next year, we would like to have an even wider impact on the community. Through National Prevention Week, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health and substance use disorders. Equally important, community members from all walks of life learn what they can do to create a healthier tomorrow by helping to prevent these problems. Being a shoulder for someone to lean on, leading someone to get help with mental health or substance use issues before they worsen, setting an example by staying substance-free, and other actions like this all can play a role in keeping the people around us and ourselves healthy and safe. We and others across the United States need to recognize the seriousness of substance use and mental health issues in our communities, the power of prevention, and the tireless efforts of those working to make a difference. The small daily actions done by individuals combined with the actions of families, communities, and coalitions can come together to make a large, bold movement of prevention. For the above reasons, we're really thankful that the city is able to recognize this as National Prevention Week in May. Thank you so much.
What she said? I'm just kidding. Actually, I just wanted to also tack onto that, that we need to also educate our families in regards to being medically addicted to pain medication due to chronic pain management that goes on in our community as well, because people still die from that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. That brings us down to person to be heard. So Ruth Dooley? Would you like this?
Well, yes. Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Well, you know, one thing I was going to do is I'm going to bitch something about some of the foundation of Ketchikan apartments. Okay, the foundation of Ketchikan apartments, I feel like it might be sliding down into the creek, and maybe it's the city's problem, but I believe that has to go to public works. I understand that. So, that's a... Just the other thing is just generally now, it's sort of a general feeling observation, and I'll stay for certainly the part of the meeting now, but these times are extremely dire, where I say it, please. It's just like, this is the big time that we've been hearing about forever. That's how I feel. So it's really, really, really crucial that we work together as soon as we can. You know, I'll do what I can, I can't, I'm here, I'll do the behind thing, and you know, and that peer support group, I'll talk to that thing, that peer support group that I do, it's on Monday nights, it's like the genesis of wonderful communication. You know, it's for the mentally ill, right? But I tell you, it's a tool for, an arrow into the future, because you talk, you listen, you don't interrupt, you don't, you don't talk out of school about what somebody said, you know, use eye language instead of telling somebody what to... All this stuff that everybody needs to do all the time, and only the mentally ill receive this kind of knowledge somehow. And I just, it seems to me the world has really got to change, it's got to turn over, it's too bad. And it's just, what can we do right now, right here, to do our part of making this thing happen? So that's where I come from. That's it.
Thank you. Michael Briggs?
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good.
My name's Michael Briggs. I am on the Board of Directors for the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau. Work for a few of the fishing lodges here in town, and as well as experience Alaska Tours. I'm also the coordinator of the Ketchikan Char-Sammy Derby each year. Being on the Board of Directors for the KVB, this year, you know, we have been on it for a number of years, and this year, I think we have the most active, engaged board that we've had in some time. And one of the objectives of the Board going through from this year and moving forward is to reach out to the community, be more visible in the community. I think a lot of people who aren't involved in the visitor industry kind of have maybe a little bit of resentment sometimes towards it, you know, that a lot of times, you know, they only see the traffic, and they only see certain elements of that industry, and they don't see us out actually participating and doing some of the things that we naturally do do in the community. So, a few of, I'm just here to kind of give you a little bit of an overview on what we as a Board, and I know Mr. Kuse, of course, is a council liaison with the KVB Board of Directors, and he's overheard much of this stuff as well. But I just want you guys to be aware that not only are we trying to reach out to the community, we're also trying to reach out to the younger generation by actively engaging students at the high school and lower levels, and trying to get them to understand the visitor industry from the bottom up, so to speak, and realize that there are ways to, the ways that the visitor industry does benefit them if they are employed by that industry, and even when they're not. So, beyond that, we, this year, we had, you may know Joe Williams and Shawna Lee, they just did an outreach at the school last week where they, which we hope will turn into a visitor industry-type job fair moving forward. This was kind of a test, you know, a dry run, so to speak, this year to go over there and speak to some of the students about the industry. We're hoping to blow that up next year to where we actually have many of our members come down and discuss not only the short-term seasonal jobs that are available to them at this time, but also ways to create a career out of the visitor industry. In addition, of course, we want to educate the community in general about how our industry benefits everybody here in Ketchikan. We're also trying to engage our members a bit more and try to get them to also understand that it's not just a little isolated bubble, and that everybody needs to reach out and work together to make it benefit everybody from the top to bottom in the community. So, I'm just here to kind of, like I said, touch base and give you guys a little bit of an example of what we're trying to do this year and moving forward, and certainly if you have any questions or anything like that, I'd be happy to answer those.
Well, thank you for coming forward. Does anybody have any questions for Mike at this time?
Thank you, I appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you. Reed Harding?
My name is Reed Harding. I live on 121 Nadu. I work for the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition, but tonight I'm here just to talk about my own opinion. I want to talk about a topic that's brought up, limiting the amount of marijuana shops. Currently, we have two shops in the city. I just want to say that it's very common for cities to regulate the amount of something like liquor stores, bars, or marijuana shops, and most already do, so I think it's totally in line with having a regulation. A lot of people base it on population that is researching, so that might be an idea if you guys wanted to have some type of rationale for how many you will allow in the city. I also want to talk about the idea of raising the age for tobacco users to 21 years old. Several states have already done this. A local community here, you guys might know the Sitka, passed this legislation as well after two years of debate. I'm for it. Nine out of 10 smokers start by the age of 18, so reducing this age is going to eliminate a lot of people who start smoking early. But I would suggest if we enact this type of legislation that we have some plan to help treat 18- to 20-year-olds that might be addicted, so some type of cessation program need to put in place if you're seriously considering enacting this type of ordinance, which I would highly suggest. I also want to talk about onsite consumption. You guys might be aware that we recently passed the laws, and they were signing the law here a couple months ago. The concept of onsite consumption kind of seems contrary to what we voted for when we legalized marijuana. Almost half of all Alaskans did not vote to legalize marijuana, and those that did vote yes probably didn't think we were going to put pot bars on every corner, and that's probably not what they're thinking, they're voting yes. It was something to do privately in your private residence. I just want to speak to ventilation, because they're like saying if we do these shops, we'll do ventilation. There's no such thing as a ventilation system that removes all particles. These are really fine particles in smoke, they're so small and light, they just kind of swirl around, doesn't matter where the airflow is going, and these are the really small particles that actually cause lung cancer. So there's no such thing as a ventilation system that's safe. It can remove some bit, but it's still not, doesn't create a safe environment for anybody. We have to protect our employees, and allowing someone to work in a confined area around constant smoke is wrong. We pass Smoke Free Alaska for this reason, to protect our employees, and it kind of feels like we're trying to roll back the clock on our employees' health by allowing this situation to happen again. I would rather not see that. Concentrating all the smoke in a few areas may sound good to some people, and I've heard some people bring this up, retired people smoking marijuana on the street corners. But if you're someone unlucky enough to have a business or residence near a pot bar, you'll quickly find out that concentrating the problem in one area just means more nuisance for you. If you're attached to these buildings, you have a residence or a business, it's just going to make the problem way worse if you're right next to this. So it doesn't really solve the problem, it just concentrates it in one area. And also issues of enforcement, I mean, who's out there stopping these tourists from smoking all over the place just because we have a place for them to smoke? Doesn't necessarily mean they're going to go there to smoke. The idea that we're getting first-time pot smokers, doing concentrated dabs and potent edibles fresh off cruise ships should frighten anyone who's concerned about safety. Although the law says patrons must be monitored, marijuana intoxication does not present itself like alcohol intoxication does. It's not easy to tell sometimes. The height does not always kick in right away, and for elders, it can match much, much longer than anticipated. Once a patron leaves, it's now our problem, it's the city to deal with. So, I don't like the idea of onsite consumption, and I think it's kind of contrary to the Smoke Free Alaska law that we already passed, so I'd just like you all to consider that. Thank you.
Jessica?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Jessica Matthews, and I'm also speaking for myself. And I think while I didn't know what Reed was going to say before he came up here, but I really agree with what he had to say. There's a pot shop in downtown now, and right between the fire department and Noah Law Enforcement Building. People come and congregate under there because there's a little bit of protection, and you can't have your windows open without smelling the pot, and because they come right out of that business and come there and smoke marijuana right there. And no one's enforcing it, no one's policing it. And I wonder, what are we going to do when we have people that are sitting inside of a building, and then they have to make their shift, and they can't even get across the street? We already have people that get run over in our town just because it's dark, and now we're going to add some intoxicating substance to people that may or may not have tried it before, and now they're going to be walking across the street. I just feel like I, I'm the end of the road for a lot of people, and in my profession, that's what tends to happen when people make poor choices and they're not held accountable to behaviors. Bad things happen to them and to people that they say they care about, you know, and but they hurt their families for all the things that end up happening. And I just, I want to say, what kind of community would want to have? What kind of community wouldn't want to be known for? I love that we're the first city in, I love that we're the first city, you know, off the cruise ships and stuff, but we're the first pot stop. I really don't want to be known for that. I told my son, who's on his way for a track trip right now, I told him I was coming to here and going to say something about this, and he's like, "What would you, what would you want me to say?" And he's like, "This is gross, it stinks, it's bad." And this is my kid who somehow has gotten this, and I bet that message is not coming across when you have adults out in the entire community that can do this. How do you, how do you reconcile that contradiction? So I don't begrudge anybody that wants to choose to do this, and I don't want to begrudge any businessman or woman that wants to have a livelihood, but what do we want to be known for in this community? And I, I've lived here over 21 years, it's a beautiful place. We shouldn't be known for pot stops. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessica. Colby Rose Pollard?
Hello, everybody. My name's Colby Rose. I'm the Director of Sales for E&amp;M Holdings and the General Manager at The Stony Moose. I've been working for The Stony Moose for about three years, and I'm here to offer some information in regards to the possible opening of another cannabis retail shop. Prior to my residence in Ketchikan, I was in the industry in California and briefly in Colorado for the past decade. I've had the chance to see the industry close up and the Lower 48 transform over the last 10 years. Originally, there was a pocket of cultivators, manufacturers, and retailers that were all able to succeed and provide livable wages for their employees, as well as provide the town with a nice hefty check from the tax revenue. Soon, everyone jumped on the cannabis train, and soon the oversaturation occurred and the market crashed. All of a sudden, there was a pot shop on almost every corner, and retailers were dropping their prices way below sustainable margins just to be able to compete with the guy next door, and next door, and next door to him. Nobody wins, and no one won. If you've heard about the state of California, the industry in California, Oregon, Washington, everyone is struggling, and tons of people are going bankrupt, and just the oversaturation is a huge issue. I have many friends and acquaintances that either had to get out of the business or go bankrupt due to the large amount of new businesses opening up and the larger folks snuffing the smaller folks out. There's only so much money that's going to be spent on cannabis. It serves both the well-being and the safety of the town to limit the retailers to a controllable level. Once you approve more retailers, there will be more requests for more cultivation licenses, more manufacturing licenses, et cetera, et cetera, and so on and so forth, until we'll find ourselves in the state that many cannabis economies find themselves in today. Consider, the state of Oregon, at this moment, is vying for being able to export their product because they have such an abundance of it, and it has an expiration date. They don't know what to do with it. Not many cities have been wise enough to put a cap on the amount of marijuana retail store licenses that are given out. I believe that this town has been very smart and savvy, putting the retail cap at two stores and two cultivation locations. I've seen what happens when there isn't a cap, and as I said, nobody wins. Right now, we've created a respectful, a safe, and somewhat quiet cannabis scene in Ketchikan. With two retailers in town, we are able to be in friendly competition, provide the community with products and service they are happy with, and there are enough goods to go around, all the while being mindful of how the town of Ketchikan wishes to uphold certain standards of conduct within the community, especially in regards to cannabis. This is obviously a sensitive subject, and we want to go about it the right way. The best way to be able to present the image we want is to keep it localized and controlled, and I feel like we have that nailed down at this point. I would encourage this Board to look at what has happened in the other small towns without a cap on their licensing before approving more licenses in our own community. Thank you for hearing me.
Anybody have any question? Thank you. Mark Woodward?
Good evening. Mark Woodward, 1027 Millar Street. I'm here as a registered agent for E&amp;M Holdings, and I think Colby did a great job of talking about that one ordinance that she was talking about. I'd like to talk about onsite consumption. A couple things, this isn't the only governing board that's dealing with this issue right now. Fairbanks just dealt with it, and Anchorage just dealt with it. In both cases, they said yes. And in fact, in Anchorage's case, they're looking to actually speed this process up so that they can actually attach the tour industry. If you look at the Anchorage Daily News, tonight, you'll see the article when you go home, and you can read it for yourself. The second thing, and I emailed all of you about this, AMCO guidelines state that if a retail store wants to apply for an onsite consumption endorsement with smoking, you have to have a freestanding building. And neither us nor Rainforest Cannabis have freestanding buildings. So neither of us can apply for that onsite consumption. Okay? So to me, you guys don't even need this ordinance. We can't even apply anyway. The second thing is, even if a store could apply, you still have an individual, case-by-case basis, ability to say no to the license. Okay? You guys already have this ability, so there's two ways, you know, you could look at it. And so what I'm trying to say is, don't shut it down because AMCO just yesterday is going to, they put it out for public comment, they want to allow non-freestanding buildings to have an edibles-only option. And we would apply for that. Okay? And what that would look like? The regulations say that you'd have to have a room outside of your retail store, so we would use the deck that we have, and that would look like a Starbucks. You would see people there drinking coffee and having snacks. No smoking, no vaping, no odor whatsoever. And so that's what we're asking you to do, is we don't say banning onsite, because if you do that, that's going to ban everything. Okay? We can't apply for the smoking one. Okay? The third thing is, if you look at this industry, it's crazy, this is our third year of being in operations, and that entire time, I think Colby said really, really well, "I think this is a good industry." Okay? We were the first ones. Now, if you look on island, there's three retail stores, there's eight cultivations, there's two edibles manufacturers with two others on the way, and then I think within the week, there's going to be a testing facility. So the entire industry is now on this island, and that's a good thing. I know it's difficult sometimes for you guys to hear that, but the jobs that that's created, the tax, you guys, I was right about the tax revenue. I told you guys that we were going to make a lot of money, and I want to say that the city has made quite a bit of money on this industry, and this is just another way for allowing us to do this. And so, like I said, if you have questions about this and how this is going to go about, you know, I've tried to explain to you guys, we can't do the smoking endorsement. We're not going to apply for it, Rainforest can't apply for it, but allow us to possibly look at this edibles option. And that's really all I have. Are there any questions about the regulations or anything?
Anybody have anything? Could I agree?
So, thanks for coming up here tonight. This edible, how does that work? My understanding from what I read today, and I think we had a conversation, is that it takes longer, you don't know when it's going to take effect. So someone goes in there, they have their edible, it might not kick in for, I don't know, an hour, an hour and a half. How do, how are you going to work that? They can only have it once, twice, three, maybe explain a little bit about that.
Sure. So the AMCO regulations, so these freestanding buildings will have the option to not only have smoking, but also edibles. That is part of the regulations. The limit is, it's 10 milligrams per purchase to go into that area, just like they limit, I want to say it's a gram for flour to be going into these onsite areas, but for edibles it's 10 milligrams, and then so on, the regulations they just put out, it would be the same thing. The thing, the difference between edibles between Alaska and Washington and Colorado and Oregon is Alaska caps it at 5 milligrams per serving, whereas in Colorado, you can get these bars that have 100 milligrams, and they've had problems with that. I mean, if you think about it, this is, this is our third summer, and maybe ask, what do people do now? What are the tourists? We sell more edibles than any other store in Alaska in the summertime. Okay? And so what do people do now? They go outside, they open up the edible, and they throw it away, and they consume it right there. I mean, they do, and we can't stop them. Okay? And so what we're saying is, if we have this option, it gives them a spot to go. They don't bring it back on the ship. They don't bring it back on the ship. And, and that's another thing, I think we've done a good job with that. So, it's low doses, it's ten milligrams, and that's it. And we talked about how we can track that is, is we wanna charge admission into that area, so that we can create a ticket, so we know how long they've been in there. You know, that, that's gonna be a big thing. It's gonna be on a deck that we can, we have four huge windows that our retail store sales can see right there. So we have, not only our security guard can be there watching it, we have our, our employees there as well, so.
Do you not already take IDs and have them sign in when they come in?
They don't sign in. Uh, only for visitor, official visitors. For IDs, all we have to do, we have our security guard check at the door, and then at the point of sale.
So at Rainforest, when I went in there, I signed in?
I don't know.
I'm just, I always thought maybe that was a...
If you were, were you there representing the city as a city council?
No, no, I just went in to talk to Jason.
Then you'd probably have to sign in. You were an official visitor. But I, I can't, that's not my store.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, but as an official visitor, we have a log, and you'd have to sign in with a lanyard, so.
I was just wondering if that wouldn't be the option to do, so that you know who's coming in, so they're not coming in twice a day? If, am I understanding this, one gram, um, per, and you can only buy one a day? So, wouldn't that be the way to monitor?
Yeah, well, that's why we wanted to create the ticket. You know, because, because people can still buy it and not go in there, have the option to not go in there. So they have to let us know if they're gonna go in, and so that's why we'd create that ticket.
Yeah, Mark, do you have any idea how much of this gets smuggled back on the boat?
Uh, I don't know, but I know that, uh, the cruise ship industry looks different with edibles than they do everything else. And they, the guy even said that.
There's a sign on the stock that says nothing, no drugs allowed onboard.
We have that in our store.
But how, how do you, how do you track it getting back on the ship?
I, I can't.
So...
I'm sure people do.
We are aiding and abetting crime.
I'm not. I'm not making that decision. But it, it, the alcohol, and I understand your situation, I understand what you're saying, but I, I can't, it's legal.
Can you limit the amount that you sell to the tourists? Cause you know that ninety percent of them in there are tourists. And, and they're gonna walk away with a whole pocket full of it, and they could eat it all before they get onboard. They eat, one of them when they get onboard, and then they dish it out. So we don't even know how intoxicated they get before they get to the ship. Anyway, I know you don't have an answer, but I got a problem.
Okay.
Judy?
Well, if we're gonna have this conversation now, people do that, I understand, with booze too. They bring their own water bottles, they fill it full of local booze, and then they get on the ship. So, I mean, it kinda works the same way. I'm just saying. I mean, I'm not, I think we need, if we're gonna look at this, we need to look at the whole picture, and not just part of it.
So, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I disagree with Dick, that I don't think he's aiding and abetting crime going on on the ship.
Thank you.
I was right.
So, Mark, you said that the state of Alaska limits edibles to five grams?
Five milligrams per serving.
Five milligram per serving?
With fifty milligrams total, the amount that you can get.
Fifteen is the total?
Five, zero, fifty.
Fifty, okay.
Fifty, milligram.
And so, in, in the area that you sell for onsite consumption, then they can take basically two servings, right?
Correct.
And, and I, I went out, and there's a lot of information on Lea, in Lea, and on California and stuff like that in regards to edibles. And one of the biggest problems they've had is figuring out the correct dosage.
Yeah.
How, how, how do you, how do you do that at your, kind of, business?
So, uh, Eric would be here, but he actually, he was up in, at the AMCO meeting, get approved for the rest of our stuff, uh, this morning. But, uh, how it works is, is he has to create the base product, whether that's like a butter or a coconut oil or whatever, and, uh, they create it, they make some samples, they get sent to be tested, and there's a little bit of leeway with the five milligrams, but it's, their, their, AMCO's pretty good, and it has to be around there. And, uh, and so we test it, and as long as it tests for not being over that, for not having fungus or microbial's or all this other stuff, then they say you're good to go, and then we, we sell them. So what we'll do is, like for a cookie, um, we'll put a scar or like a mark in there, so it'll say five milligrams, five milligrams. And so, what I've seen, I've heard of people doing is, uh, and again, our, our number one client for this is a woman aged forty to seventy in the summer. And what they'll do is, they'll go in there, she'll, they'll leave the store, they'll break the cookie in half, and her and her husband will split. That's what they do. And, and Lauren Jones, who's on the AMCO board, knows that. I mean, they, they realize that people are doing this, but it's just, it is what it is. I'm just following state law, that's what I'm trying to do.
I, I appreciate that. And, and I appreciate the, the comments, uh, in regards to, um, the two stores that are in town, we haven't had, and that talks to Joe and other people, we haven't had issues.
Yeah, good, I'm glad.
But, you know, we still have individuals that you can't control coming out of the store, that'll go and smoke in somebody else's area, that, that creates a problem for them, right? And, and how we address that.
Okay.
Uh, but in reading some of this stuff, it's very hard for you as a, a retailer to judge, based on the individual that's coming in, how that cookie's gonna affect it.
Yeah, we, we give them advice, cause it's all body type, it's all experience, I mean, there's a lot of things, but that's, I have, I have the best staff in Alaska. I pay them extremely well. And there's a reason, because I want people to feel comfortable. Again, you're dealing with a lot of vacationers from Texas, from Florida, from Arizona, not a lot of experience, they maybe, they say that they have in college, and so my staff tells them exactly. We, we have offerings of two point five milligrams. Okay? So, so for inexperienced people, and my staff tell people like that. Take, take half of, half of the cookie, or a quarter of it, start there. You know, and, and like I said, there's a reason why we haven't had problems, and I'll say, it's because of my staff. My staff is that good.
So, and, and we may have some more questions later on, but one of the, one of the questions I have, liquor establishments, when they sell alcohol, they have members of TAM card, and most of them are required to have third-party liability insurance.
Yeah.
Is there a third-party liability insurance offered to marijuana shops?
Yes.
There is?
I, I believe so. Uh, we were talking about this earlier, I pay a lot of insurance, so I, I wanna say yes.
You're gonna say yes, just what it costs, right?
Yeah, it is what it is, yeah.
Okay, okay. And that was one of the questions that was asked of me, and I didn't know the answer, so I'm glad we figured that out. Um, again, I still have, you know, some concern for safety's sake, not, not for anything else, and that's an individual choice that you probably don't have a lot of control over. But, when, when they consume something at your facility, and they're only there for fifteen minutes, they're not gonna get the effect of that until they're walking down the street someplace, shopping in a store, whatever. And, and I don't know how the, the retail, I mean, if, if they have an adverse effect, I'll say it that way, a lot of them probably won't. But if they do, uh, how does the community deal with that?
Yeah. You know, we've kinda asked this question to our, the people in our neighborhood, and they've all said their sales have gone up. All of them, tremendously. So I'm asking, I don't take my word for it. Go down there and, and talk to every single one, and that's why all of them, all of our neighbors support this. All of them, so.
Appreciate it. Anybody else have questions? Thank you.
Joey?
Hi, Joey Tellson with Substance Based Task Force. I'm also the President of the, uh, VFW Auxiliary, and on a regular occurrence, we happen to have, um, individuals that will smoke marijuana in our parking lot, since we've gone non-smoking. And, um, it wafts back into our building, and I've had to go out there and catch people that are constantly, um, doing it, and they were like, under the impression that because it was legal, they could do it anywhere, and I said, "No, actually, it's not illegal, or it's not legal to do it in a public place." And, um, and a few have actually gotten to the point where we have told them that if they decide to do it, again, they are not welcome at the VFW. I had a few notes that I wanted to address regarding the, um, a couple things. One was the tobacco usage, uh, age increase to twenty-one. And, um, and again, with, you know, the consumption of marijuana in our town, is that it's all fine and dandy to put as many laws as you want, but if you've got nobody to enforce it, then we're all, deal with the, well, they're not gonna do anything about it anyway. You know, and people will be calling and bogging down the emergency lines, or even the main line of the Ketchikan Police Department, or the Alaska State Troopers, um, because people are smoking marijuana, um, blowing it in their face, they're not in a consumption site, and we end up becoming babysitters, um, you know, and of course, us being the tattling siblings of that. Um, it comes down to choice. The choice being is that many of us don't choose to inhale marijuana, or even cigarette smoke, but unfortunately, we are ended up being exposed to it. It's kinda like when you're on your, the airplane back in the seventies and eighties, remember the non-smoking section of the airplane? I mean, what? Same with our restaurants in town, until recently, there was the smoking and non-smoking section. Um, I am a previous tobacco smoker, and, um, it's nice to taste my food finally, that I don't smoke. So, that was the other one. So there was liabilities, uh, enforcement, the liabilities, like the concerns you were talking about. Um, I also have concerns about, um, any of these establishments that are doing the marijuana, that are giving advice. To me, they're not a medical doctor, and should not be giving any advice about the dosage of a controlled substance to anybody. I mean, weight takes a factor, um, health, years of use, things like that, that, you know, many people should not, they don't know the history of the customer that's coming in, they don't know anything about them, and they shouldn't be giving any advice on anything. You know, I mean, I don't give advice when I'm a caseworker, I don't give advice in any other capacity, that I don't have a degree or knowledge behind that information. Just because you're a retailer doesn't mean that you have the educational background to give a person a dosage amount. So, that's another concern I had. The idea of it being an enticing little Starbucks thing kind of fears, my fears for my, my child, you know, I mean, because it's legal, you know, there, there's, the attitude at the high school is, it's no big deal, nobody's ever died of smoking marijuana, mom, blah, 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 you know, so-and-so's doing it and whatever. That doesn't mean it's right, you know? I, I want my child to learn to cope with life, and I understand that there are medicinal purposes for it, but I don't want it to have frills and such, and be enticing to the point where everybody's going there like a Starbucks. You know what I mean? So, um, these are just a few of my concerns about that, um, but the biggest one of all is, it's, it's, none of this is gonna matter if we can't budget to enforce it. None of it will. I mean, I know that as a state, we're in a budget crisis, on a municipality level, we are in a budget crisis. I mean, we're asking people to turn off nightlights and, and everything else for energy consumption. The last thing we need to be doing is putting additional funding to add additional enforcement, because we said yes to something that we really don't have control over, and we really can't regulate once it leaves the store. So, that's just my take on it, thank you.
Thank you. Terrence Robbins.
Good evening, I'm Terrence Robbins, thirty-seven, ten Hillside Road. Um, I'm here to speak for myself. Um, I spoke to you at the last meeting about, um, Tobacco Twenty-One and some of the benefits, educated you a little bit on that. Um, sorry you missed it, Mr. Kefir, it was pretty great. Um, okay. Today, I just, I wanna, uh, I'll be a lot quicker on the Tobacco Twenty-One stuff. I just wanna highlight that, um, uh, as stated earlier, ninety-five percent of smokers begin using tobacco before they turn twenty-one, or by the time they turn twenty-one. Tobacco Twenty-One will reduce tobacco, youth tobacco use by twenty-five percent. The arguments you'll hear against it are, um, from an industry that you're taking away their future customers, or their current customers, right? The, the reason Tobacco Twenty-One works is, kids aren't in the same circle, high school kids aren't in the same circle as twenty-one-year-olds very often. Um, so it's gonna be really hard for them to get tobacco products, um, just like it'd be pretty hard to get, uh, alcohol from a twenty-one-year-old. But when it was nineteen, or eighteen to buy alcohol, uh, it would be hard, it'd be hard, it'd be hard not to find alcohol. You know? Juul is the main reason of this epidemic we're having with these cigarettes, and they've came out and said, um, "We urge lawmakers in states with these age, with age protections to follow their example of Tobacco Twenty-One, and when and if they do, we will proudly support their efforts to raise the age to twenty-one." Juul noted, "Raising the legal age is just one strategy to reduce underage use," but it said it's critical, it will prevent high school seniors and recent high school graduates from purchasing tobacco products and sharing them with underage users. We know that social sourcing, obtaining tobacco products from friends or siblings who are of legal age, is currently how a large swath of youth users access these products. Regarding enforcement, um, there will be a, a small level of work, um, that the police department will do, would have to do to, to truly enforce it. Um, they're not gonna have to hire people. Um, the state of Alaska, the SINAR people, Joe Darnell, that group, they come to Ketchikan once a year, and they, two of them come down with one, uh, eighteen-year-old, and that eighteen-year-old goes around all the stores, um, all the stores then call each other, "Hey, the enforcement people are around." And that's okay, because guess what? That means all those other stores are gonna card everybody, and make sure they don't get caught, cause they don't wanna lose their license to sell. So, um, the police department will have to do some sort of enforcement. Uh, there was eleven, there's eleven, uh, businesses in town that were selling cigarettes last I counted, so it's not like there's fifty of them. There's, uh, more that sell e-cig, so there's gonna be, I don't know how many, uh, have current endorsements, but it's, it's not that significant. It would be, it would be, um, something that, uh, they would have to work at, but it, it's not gonna, you know, they're not gonna have to stop chasing criminals to, to do this. And then on, um, onsite consumption, I would just like to, um, I'd just like to bring up the point that, um, three AAC, three oh six, three one B, uh, three ten B four prohibits allowing intoxicated or drunken persons to enter or remain on the licensed premises. Seems reasonable until you realize that all individuals are intoxicated with the first inhalations of marijuana. That's the point of smoking marijuana, to get intoxicated. Unlike alcohol, where the point of drinking is not necessarily to get intoxicated. And yes, getting high is getting intoxicated. Um, and, um, and because there's no way to be sure that all customers will not drive within four hours of leaving on, the onsite consumption establishment, especially in Alaska where towns are spread out, it's cold, employment weather is common, and cabs are expensive or limited, we can be assured that a very high percentage of these customers will be driving when they leave an onsite consumption place if they're allowed to smoke, um, or do edibles. A survey done for Health Canada suggests that thirty-nine percent of people who admitted to smoking pot say they've driven within two hours of smoking, uh, of smoking up. For instance, the survey showed that among pot users aged twenty to twenty-four, forty-three percent admitted they haven't gotten behind the wheel within two hours of smoking the substance. Um, and then they had a couple different age categories, and half the users in those two main categories said they'd done so in the past thirty days. It's not like once in a while. Um, imagine if every single person that left everyone at Ketchikan's bars was drunk. You know, there's a percentage that are still gonna drink and drive. There's, right now, but there's that percentage of every one of them, you know, our roads wouldn't be safe. And Ketchikan only has one main road, and there's bus stops along it, there's a lot of things that can happen. It's dark, we have people getting ran over, um, because you can't see people in the crosswalks. We had a bit, you know, the city council did a great job of dealing with that, and having special, uh, crosswalks put in. What are we gonna do when we start having people who are high, or tourists, getting run over by cars? And then the last thing I'll say is, um, marijuana and alcohol are synergistic, which ample, which is amplifying the effects of each one combined. Having marijuana onsite consumption adjacent to bars will likely promote co-use and very high levels of intoxication. So, um, I think the public does not benefit from this proposed regulation, only, uh, marijuana industry, marijuana industry wants to sell marijuana, or marijuana is gonna benefit. So, thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you, Jared.
Alright, thank you guys.
Alright, thank you guys.
Spencer. Got a broken wing.
Yeah, a little surgery on it, they're gonna make it better than ever, like the Six Million Dollar Man. Good evening, council, Spencer Strasburg, 618 Canyon. I come feeling pretty good tonight, except I saw like a packed house. And like, that's probably gonna be a blessing and a curse all at the same time. I came here for other kind of business and I didn't realize everybody was gonna listen to me. So I came here to kinda throw my own stuff out on the carpet in front of everybody. I think sometimes, well, I'm certain that humility is an important part in leadership. So it's important that I do this for myself tonight. And I hope, and I just wanna say thanks. If you guys will hang on for a couple of minutes, it's gonna be a long one tonight. And, and I'm just gonna throw that out there, because I gotta get past that to move on and get stronger, like my arm. So I learned a lot about myself since I started running for city council. At first, I don't even know what, I do kinda know what made me do it, but then as I started going, I realized it was so hard. I admire every one of you that's made it to one of those seats, because it's so freaking hard sometimes. It's so hard to push yourself out there in front of people, lay yourself out, have people take shots at you, not agree with you, all that stuff. And so for sitting in one of those seats, you guys deserve for me to, to hold you in higher honor than I probably have in the past. And so that's why I'm here to say I apologize for not understanding the game of politics and coming into it with kind of an approach like a bully. And that, that's kinda what I have done a lot. And I've learned that about myself. So God, if I never get to one of those seats, it's gonna be okay, because this journey has made me a much better person. I didn't realize, I mean, I didn't even realize it was bullying the way I viewed this. But I, it is because of, I won't get into all this, you guys got a lot to do here. And we'll do more maybe later. But it's probably a lot from my upbringing. And I've just really learned how much my ADHD is a disability. I've never, ever said that. I've always said it was an ability. It's like my super talent. I could outwork every one of you on there, because I have it. And I know it, and I always bring that game. And that's what I always thought I was gonna do, was just get in that seat and show you how hard I work, and no one will ever keep up with me. No one has ever kept up with me. Even the 26-year-old guys I take on vacation go, "How does that dude stay up so late? How does he rock on four hours of sleep?" It's just part of that skill. Keeps me, keeps me up, keeps me thinking, keeps me going. Sometimes, again, it's a curse, and I'm not like everybody else. And so I realized that the fight started when I was, when this, this whole thing came around. I'd really been waiting for marijuana legalization since I was a kid, since I was 14. And I've been using it since then. And it's my medicine. I've never really said that out loud. And I really believe that they're gonna find out as time goes on, that it's just more medicine. And then, at the time that legalization came out, my best friend was fighting liver cancer. And he, he since died last year. But it was the one thing that I could see it make a difference. And I started really believing in it. And then Julie got cancer. And she's never used cannabis. It was always me. It was kinda like my little thing. And she started using it. It was incredible, the benefits that it gave her. I could just see it, just from the beginning with the sleep. There's more incredible stuff than that. I just know, 'cause I'm just, I'm just, I've just tried to experiment myself. I don't have any clinical proof, I don't have anything. I just don't have any fear. And that's why, when everyone started reacting with fear, I realized that's where we made all the poorest choices we could make as a group collectively, council people, businesses. Everyone collectively makes, makes poor choices based on fear. That's what I sat over in my chair over here tonight. That's what I keep hearing about everything. So this is, I'm just gonna leave a big general kinda thing about fear. And the first thing that we're gonna need to do, I think as a council, whether I sit on that seat or not, I'm gonna keep coming and trying to help out at defining our goals and our intent. I think if we do that, and we set aside our emotion, every time we come here, we're all fired up. I realized that's what was going on inside of me. I don't have a flight response. That's what happens when you take an ADHD kid and put him in alcoholic environment where he's extremely abused for seventeen years. You have to fight. You have to fight every day. And I finally, I, I think I did kinda run away. I left Washington State at seventeen years old with a bag of clothes. And I ended up on those streets of South Florida, right in Fort Lauderdale, where you guys saw their port expansion now. Now I'm excited, because that's what I was saying last summer. We gotta go see that, because they built theirs for nothing. It didn't cost them anything. And now you guys are on it. And now I'm like, whoa, I'm proud. I read it in the paper and I go, now they're on it. Now they know how to find those answers, get up and go. Everybody will support you in the cost that it takes to go to those kind of events. It's not lavish, it's not anything, it's how you find out information. We gotta get off this rock. We gotta, we gotta tap into people that are off this rock to help us. I did stuff this winter that I've, that even astounds me. In the face of fear again, I just wanna fight. So everybody said, "What are we gonna do? It's January, this is the worst winter ever for this store, with the construction and all the stuff. This is it." And I'll tell you, this is, this was the scariest winter ever, you know? I'm past the five-year point, you know, that's the point where everybody goes and they die. My group is past that, and we're strong. And so I didn't wanna let everybody go. And I looked at them all, I don't even know where it comes from. I said, "Fine, we gotta do more then. Instead of, instead of putting on the brakes in this town, we need to put our foot on the gas, we need to open more days. Let's open up on that Sunday when we're closed and we'll figure out how to make those tilts go longer." And they said, "But we don't have enough people to run those things." And I said, "Then you hire me two more people." And they said, "But we don't even have, we're not even opening them days and we don't have enough customers to make it now." And I said, "I don't know, I'll go to Ketchikan, I'll figure it out, just do it." And they, and like, four days went by. I had no ideas, and I went to social media, and I stood there and I just laid it out, much like now. And I said, "Hey, Ketchikan, you screamed at us to keep the doors open every winter, and then where are you? I need you now." And, and this is at the same time of the furloughed workers. So I took all that stuff that was going on, and I said, "I'm gonna take this event and make it happen." So I quit worrying about making money. And I said, "Just try to keep everybody going and keep these wheels moving, and try to feed those workers." So I fed those government workers for free. I said, "You guys come down here and eat." And I said, "Ketchikan, you do what you do, and you step up, and you come down here and you buy a hot dog, or you buy something, can you help keep your neighbor going?" It's freaking incredible. The revenue increased. There was more revenue than if I had done nothing, even after I gave away the free food. Is it possible that you could actually give stuff away for free and get more in revenue? Doesn't make any sense. I've watched a million business models, that's all I do is watch business. That's my game. Don't watch sports, don't do anything. I just tear your business apart when I walk inside. I just look at everything, and, and I usually don't say a word anyway. But it's 'cause that's the game I play. And we increased the revenue, we got all that stuff done, and I realize the report card's coming in now. We kept everybody going, we increased our doors, we kept the doors open, and we increased the amount of revenue. Did we make any more money? Probably not for winter, but this was the best winter I ever had. They blocked them streets off, and I got all my parking and all my access blocked off. All I can do is work with those workers and show them some kindness. Since everybody down the street's pissed off, you've been shutting off all their access. These guys have been getting rough. Alright, I like that. I'll wrap it up. So at any rate, what it means, I like, thank you. What it means is, is we can change everything here, we gotta stop worrying about fear. We're doing the smoking thing again, let's just figure out what our intent is. Either, either Ketchikan's gonna be a really wholesome place where nobody under the age of 30 smokes a cigarette, and we're all gonna show that to the rest of the world, and it's gonna cost us something. Or, we're gonna conduct business like a city does. A city is a place where people come to get things. It's an outpost in the middle of nowhere. If we take all of the moral things that those people are looking for and put them off on a shelf, they won't need anything here, and we won't be able to do business. I'm trying to build the 907-11, and I hate cigarette sales. They're the worst, they're the worst item I have in the whole store. They cost like nine bucks or ten bucks for me to make like a buck and a half a pack. Do you know how much revenue I tie up in the smokes to make next to nothing? Why would I even do it? Because my freaking customer expects it. When they get off that ship, they're gonna look at me and go, "You ain't got smokes in a convenience store?" That's why we don't have any convenience stores here. We all shop at Safeway and Tatsudas and stuff, and we don't have any more of those left, because they don't have the right products to sell. I'm holding on to products, but they're quickly going away. One more minute. And I'm not fighting, I'm negotiating. Alright, here we go.
Here we go.
We didn't do very good on the, on the last cigarette legislation. Let's figure it out. I went there and fought for two years on that regulation with the borough. No one wanted, everybody looked blank faces when I said, "You charging taxes on stuff that isn't even supposed to be taxed." It went on for two years till we got wrapped up into the marijuana thing, and they went, "Oh yeah, Spence is right." So I went to the meeting, I said, "Hey guys, what about all that money you took from my friends and neighbors that was inappropriately taxed?" And nobody wanted to say anything. I said, "You know what? I feel guilty taking that money, I work for you guys. When you set up these rules and you wanna collect taxes and stuff, you gotta make them good enough that I can go home and sleep with it. If I gotta take money from my friends and neighbors that's not appropriate, I have to sleep with that." No one ever made it right after the two years. And when the marijuana shops got them all straightened away on what was a product and what was a nicotine thing, all of the stuff that I talked about in the beginning, they went, "Alright, well, we straightened it out now. Let's forget about all that money we took from those folks for two years." And then, Terrence couldn't even come up with a plan that anybody's gonna be happy with for fifteen percent of that money. Not even Peace Health could come up with a plan where, that the borough people couldn't figure that fifteen percent of that money was gonna be good for, so we just appropriated all to the school board, which means that you effectively figured out a way to take one small little population and pay for services at the school that all of us are supposed to be paying for. And those are the poorest population by numbers, ask Terrence, I'm sure he has them. We went for the poorest person, and we made them pull a bigger load for our school. That we shouldn't be proud of. Any questions? I'll cut it, no wait! We're having a sidewalk thing, you guys are all invited tomorrow. I told Bob, we're doing a sidewalk ceremony, I have the biggest scissors in the world. Yeah. Paul is working on a ribbon, 'cause I messed that part up. Impulsively, didn't have enough time to get Amazon to get rid of it.
What time tomorrow?
Noon. Noon. There's free hot dogs, but the reindeer dogs cost you more. If you buy stuff, you help our school. And, but, and some free cinnamon rolls and stuff too. I really want to be a good time. Let's really be proud of this, 'cause every time I look at pictures of people building the tunnel, I always think, in forty years, they're gonna be looking at us in silver clothes going, "Look at them old dudes in pineapples." Let's own it, we got a new sidewalk.
Alright, at the end, the person to be heard.
Sorry.
Bring this down to consent agenda?
Forgot what we were doing.
We're moving on to consent.
I just hit a comment, and I...
I'll make a motion.
Move in second? Move in second? Any discussion? Could you read the item?
Liquor license, transfer of ownership, Oceanview Restaurant, contract number 1902, consulting services for the lease of the Ketchikan Medical Center ECG Management. And that's, that's it, that's all there was.
That's alright.
I withdraw the unfinished business.
Any, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Eisen?
Yes.
That motion passes, moves us on to unfinished business. General Government, contract number 19-02, consulting services for the lease of the Ketchikan Medical Center ECG Management Consultants.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council to direct the City Manager to cease further discussions with ECG Management Consultants regarding contract 19-02 consulting services for the lease of the Ketchikan Medical Center and initiate the process of working with the City Council to develop a negotiation strategy for a new traditional building lease agreement.
Then move in second. Judy?
So after we had our meeting, and I think that went pretty well, we then, I then asked Carl how many facilities Peace Health has these operating lease agreements with. And found out that none of them do. But that they, in most cases, I'll just read this, that, that they're all land leases, not operating leases. But in some cases, they have side agreements that provide for periodic consultation or informational meetings. So I'm suggesting that we do that, that we have the land lease, and then we have a separate agreement with them that deals with some of the issues that we have.
Question.
Mark.
Judy, you're talking about the side agreement for periodic meetings. Are we also, in your incantation of this, are you also talking about some measure of accountability that the community would have with the hospital on specific?
Yes, and I think that by having a land lease and then having this separate, I think we could work this and have more, we could put additional things in there. Like there was some conversation about, I think it was with you, about rent or how that would work. Maybe how much they provide in terms of in-kind services and what that looks like. I don't know, it's just an idea, so I'm interested to hear what everybody else.
Question for the manager. Carl, with other locations for Peace Health, are you aware of any models with a land lease and a accountability agreement that we could use as a, as a model?
The information I conveyed to Councilmember Zingy came from Ron Saxon, who is the legal counsel for, for Peace Health. I am not personally familiar with the other agreements that Peace Health has negotiated in the communities where it operates facilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to comment, I, you know, I might be able to live with splitting it, but my biggest issue right now is I don't think we've got the knowledge to deal with it, either one of them, without having somebody advising us that's been involved in it. So that's why I felt that using these consultants to do what we wanna do is gonna give us the best advice we can, because I, I just don't think we've got the knowledge and the time on the staff to deal with it. Is, is my thought.
Yeah, thank you. I, I agree with Mr. Kuz on this one. I, I think that the managers and, and the management suggested that we stick with the original motion, which was to go forward with the consulting agreement with ECG. I, I think that there are so many opportunities out there that we don't know about. It's not just about, about how we interface directly with, with the hospital, it's how we interface regionally with other healthcare... It's how we interface regionally with other healthcare providers, with search, with KIC. I think there's a lot of things that we can and should be doing, and we're not. And I can't even begin to tell you what those are because I don't know. I learned more in forty-five minutes about the opportunities that we have sitting with these consultants. And I think that it's, my, what I'm gonna do tonight is I'm going to support the original motion that's already on the table. And I hope that my fellow council members will follow suit. Thank you.
Yeah, Judy?
So, the original motion was the first phase, which is two hundred thousand dollars. And we have no idea what this could end up costing us, right?
Correct. If, I, I think the first issue that the council has to address is whether or not there's a majority interest in pursuing an operations lease. If there's not, and you wanna negotiate a building property lease with the various aspects of communication, accountability, in-kind services, other factors, my recommendation would be as provided in alternative motion number one. I agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Kuz. No one, your staff has any knowledge or experience in developing a type of lease for the next twenty to thirty years with the operator of the hospital that is current with today's standards. We had a twenty, thirty-year, simple building lease that was negotiated probably originally in the sixties. It's a whole different world today, and what I'm trying to convey to the council is, I think everybody's approaching this with the right intent. Peace Health wants to be a good partner, we wanna work with Peace Health, but we just lack the expertise. And if you're not gonna do an operations lease, and you just wanna do a building lease, I think it's a prudent move to still have somebody who's knowledgeable in this field at the table with city staff. I don't consider it to be a real protracted negotiation if it, as it would be if we were trying to do an operations lease. But I, it's my counsel that you're gonna want some type of professional expertise to do, to do the type of lease that Councilmember Zingy has proposed. And I can have that discussion with ECG. I don't think it's gonna be the amount that we looked at earlier when they gave you an estimate for negotiation of an operations lease. I don't think it's gonna be anywhere near that involved. The mayor and I are meeting with Peace Health next week to talk about the communication issues. You know, and maybe just some simple consultation with ECG, and then discussions with, with Peace Health to, to net out the framework of an agreement. But, but I agree with Councilmember Kuz.
Kelly?
I understand that the cost, the two hundred thousand dollars is the issue. And I also understand that that scares people, or in some cases makes people very angry. But when you, when you actually itemize that out over a twenty-year lease, or even a thirty-year lease, and we make a bad choice in that lease, and we have to live with that, and we continue down the same road we've been doing for the last twenty years with, with what's been going on with Peace Health, that's twenty-five thousand a year for twenty years at five hundred thousand. That's twenty thousand a year at two hundred thousand. What's it worth? To me, I, I would love to be able to say, "Oh yeah, let's just make a lease on our own." I know that, I don't have that kinda expertise. But I, I, as a, as a community member, getting it right and having a hospital that actually works for the people, who isn't, who actually puts some in-kind into the community, and shows that amount of in-kind, not just says, "Oh, we got this much, we did this with the gift shop," but actually the organization, the corporate part of it, puts some in-kind in based on how much that building would be worth if we rented it out. I, I can live with paying or spending twenty-five thousand a year for twenty years to know that we had some kind of backup from, uh, somebody with the expertise to show us, to give us a lease that we can, that gives us teeth.
Julie?
Oh, I would, I would also, tonight, I would support using these consultants. I realize consultants cost a lot of money. I don't agree with the, what was said, that that is the only reason why that's stopping us, because it isn't just the money. I do think this is gonna be millions. It's not gonna be two hundred thousand. Two hundred thousand is to assess the community. By the time we actually end up with a lease, it's gonna be millions. And this will be my last vote on it. I will vote to use the consultants, and it's not likely I'll be back in, within five years, so you guys will be doing something, but I know it's gonna be millions. That's all I have.
Mark. In the first scope, it's two hundred thousand dollars. This does include the fifty-five thousand dollars that Peace Health is gonna be picking up? So it's really a hundred and forty-five, not two hundred thousand, to, to the city of Ketchikan?
The motion that's on the table, that, that was the offer Peace Health made, that's correct.
Okay, so there's twenty-five percent off the first phase right there, before we go any further. I guess I kind of agree with Julie. We have no idea to know what phases two, three, and four are. We also have, I would think, the opportunity to say no at any future phase. If, if we think the deal's going sideways, if we don't like the direction, if we don't like the product, if we don't like the direction they're taking us, we can always say, say no. Phase one does not commit us to any future phases, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Carl, sit here and tell me what the difference is between the motion that's on the table, not, not Judy's motion, but the other motion that's on the table, and alternative motion one.
The motion on the table was to do a phase one assessment relative to the services that Peace Health offers within the community. Getting feedback from community users of the hospital, of their assessment of the, the services Peace Health offers. And then, some type of comparison of what Peace Health is doing to other communities our size in Alaska, and probably the Pacific Northwest. So we have some type of benchmark to, to start from. Alternative motion number one, I put out there because I sensed there was some reluctance on the part of the council to do that type of assessment, and a desire to move immediately into negotiations for a lease agreement. The way alternative motion number one is structured, it still maintains the goal of getting an operations lease opposed to a building lease. I reiterate my earlier remarks, I think that's the first thing the council has to decide, is do you want an operations lease, which is the way we initially approached this? Or do you just want a simple building lease? Which should be brought up to current standards, current industrial standards. In either case, whether you do the assessment, or you go directly into negotiations, either for an operations or a building lease, I still believe, long-term, the community will benefit by having somebody with expertise at the table with the city reps, who are gonna put this lease together. Because we have no, no experience in this.
Yeah.
Thank you. The question that you asked the council to decide one or the other, I think we need the consultants to answer that question. I think what we should do is go back to the original motion, begin our conversations and our interactions with the consultants to decide where we wanna take this thing. I think for us to make either or decisions like this time is premature. So that's why I was supporting the original motion, to go back and to see how all of this thing sues us out. I think that the consultants, once they're on site, would help us with that. That's all I have, thank you.
Dave?
I guess what we're probably all worried about is, is the two hundred thousand dollars at the start, as, as Judy mentioned. That said, I think that we're also coming to a realization that we're probably not looking at a long-term, as you're describing it now, operations lease and which we're gonna be going out to the entire world saying, "Someone come in here and please operate our facility for us, doing full well." That process may indeed cost four or five times what it's costing you. I'm not worried about spending the two hundred thousand at this point, because the people who have been chewing on me recently about how much money that is are the same people who've been chewing on me for the last, you know, two or three years about we need to do something with the hospital. Now, you can't have, I'm sorry, you, you cannot hold both those opinions. Either we just go back to a dollar a year and not worry about it and save all that money, or we do something. We can't, you know, so it's, it's gonna cost something. Certainly, I'm not going to be in support of spending millions of dollars to end up back where we kind of are now with a slightly bare lease. I also am concerned too about, about the teeth that's going to be in this thing that will indeed alleviate a lot of the issues that have been raised. And I think I will agree with everyone else around this table, this is not something we know a lot about. We are not experts, staff is not experts. We have seen leases in the past, we weren't experts on them, and we regret them fifteen, twenty, thirty years later. We need to be in a situation now where, going forward, we have a reasonable expectation that twenty-five years from now, some council won't be saying, "Those idiots!" And if we try to do this ourselves...
You ready?
Well, he's gonna let him withdraw my motion.
We still love ya.
So Carl, if I get this right, the, the original, the motion here withdrawn in seconds. The original was in regards to trying to figure out an operational lease which would be by far more complicated and involved than doing a simple property lease with some side marks.
When we started down this road, the council collectively said, "Go out and look for someone who can assist us in this." And we put considerable effort into trying to identify possible companies, and we came back to you with ECG, and they came to Ketchikan to meet with you. I unfortunately was not at that meeting. But the feedback I got from council members and from staff was that there was real interest in developing an agreement that would provide for a greater amount of input than we have now relative, not to manage the surgery suites, or to say, "This is how we're gonna provide dialysis," but say, "This is what we're hearing from the community. We need an agreement that's gonna make the operator more responsive to what we're saying." And you can define that as an operations lease, or I suppose you could define it as a building lease with much more teeth than what we've had in the past. Regardless how you call it, I, I think you need a baseline assessment that Peace Health has offered a good amount of money to help finance. So you can compare what other communities have, and have documented feedback from the users within the community that this phase one will provide for. But ECG will come up and talk to people, and, and, and get the good and the bad. And then, that will be presented to the council. And then, from that, it would be my hope that you can work with ECG and the staff and say, "Now let's start talking to Peace Health, and this is the framework of the agreement we would like to see." That, that's my viewpoint of the motion that's on the floor.
So, so the public understands. Matt Kirk, could you read the motion that's on the floor at this time?
It was moved by Kuz, seconded by Zingy. The City Council authorized the City Manager to enter into contract number nineteen oh two consulting services for the lease of the Ketchikan Medical Center between the city of Ketchikan and ECG Management Consultants in the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Approved funding from the Public Health Department's two thousand nineteen healthcare operations management consulting services account six four zero point oh four, and direct the City Manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the City Council.
Everybody understand the motion? Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Gage?
Yes.
Tyfer?
Yes.
Zingy?
No.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Yeah, pass of six to one, moves us on to new business. General Government, item seven eight two, seven eight one has been pulled at this point. Discussion of potential change, the number of retail marijuana businesses allowed in downtown area. Councilmember Flora.
Alright, well, I wanna be really clear at the start of this discussion that the reason I put this on the agenda is neither an endorsement nor an objection to an additional retail cannabis. Mr. East really came a few meetings back, and wanted to know what the process was. This is the process. We've heard from the public tonight, some people are in favor of it, some people are not. Those in the industry already seem that it's a bad idea if we have more. I'm not condoning unlimited entry, I never said that. But I don't know how we don't give ear to somebody who wants to take the risk to be in business doing something legally. That's why I asked for it to be put on the agenda, that's, that was the sole motive.
Yeah, Kelly?
So, the other thing would be that they would have to find out if the borough even has opening, a spot that's open.
Correct.
Because we only had the two spots that were available at the time of the last...
Well, except, we all know the borough will find spots.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's not our job.
No, but we have to be careful, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We have to be careful there, cuz the minute we open it up, they'll find fifteen spots.
Yeah, that's true.
You would have to comply with the borough regulations. There would have to be a discussion on how many more, if any, we deem appropriate. There are X number of cannabis users in Ketchikan, right?
Yeah.
Whether there's two stores or three...
That was probably one of the radios out there.
Well, X number of stores, there's, whether you have two or three. Let's just say there was permitting for one additional store. The total number of users of cannabis in Ketchikan don't increase. The pie's the same, the pie's just now getting split three ways to those that choose to do so legally. Okay? We saw the memo from the police chief, there doesn't, he didn't seem to have a lot of angst about it. I got some... Minors underage in the premises, hasn't been a problem. Violations by the present operators, hats off to you guys, you're doing a great job because there doesn't seem to be a new excessive amount of police work that's been created since the industry's become legal. So, I'm not sure what the council thinks is the best way to go, but I think, like I said, I think at least bears consideration for somebody wanting to do something legally.
Well, I will make one small complaint about the less, not, not maybe policed, is the fact that although may, what I see down by the bookstore and the, in that area, is a lot of consumption, a lot of use in the street when kids are walking up that sidewalk when they get off the bus, it's, but I don't see that over on this side of town. So I don't know...
What sort of people drink booze?
These are not the, but these are not even the same people. I also see people stepping off sidewalks without even looking, whether they're intoxicated or under the influence of marijuana, they're stepping off the sidewalks there at the federal building and not looking either way. So, and I don't see, I do not see police policing it. I don't know, I, I know that for that, there's probably some hands tied, and as one of our speakers tonight mentioned, if we're not able to enforce it, it's a free-for-all. 420 was a, I noticed on 420 that it was like a free-for-all down on that end of town. I wouldn't call that good neighbors. And no disrespect, but I shouldn't have it blown in my face when I'm walking down the street. It's, my choices should be just as respected as other people's choices. So, I mean, I see an accident waiting to happen.
Mark.
You know, I have a question for Mr. Wilber, if it's okay.
Yeah, go right.
So if I understand your concern generally, it's what's going on outside of the stores that you find offensive and not tolerable. Okay. It's a lot of words in your mouth, but what's going on in the stores legally isn't the issue, right?
Right.
It's going on outside of the stores. Okay, I have a question for you, Mr. Wilber.
Yeah.
Everything you're doing is compliant, everything you're doing is above board, and you're doing it just the way you're supposed to be doing it. So, how do you, regardless of whether we have any more stores or not, two stores, three stores, whatever, what can you, as the retailers presently, do to be better neighbors, even though you're doing everything within the bounds of the law right now for the operation of the retail business, how do you help alleviate some of the community's concerns because they don't want to smell it? And that doesn't seem to be an unreasonable ask from the community.
Sure.
What can you guys do?
Okay, what we do, because we can kind of control our neighborhood, we talked to Stephen Reeve a lot, we're really good friends with all these businesses, and we ask them, you know, because the onsite thing got asked, and we asked them, "What do you guys think?" And this smell was a big one. And so that's why we just kind of let it go and said, "Well, we're not going to apply." You know, how we try to enforce our area is, is we have our security person sitting right there, you know, at the front door, usually in the summertime, they'll be even closer to the alleyway. We, we tell no one to consume there. I mean, we will, if we see someone try to, we tell them, "No, and we tell them to leave." You know, it's, we try to enforce it as much as we can, but I can't allow my employees to go past that alleyway liability-wise, you know? So we do the best that we can, and as far as cruise ships go, I mean, we have signage in our room, in our store, on the door, as you walk out saying, "Do not take this aboard cruise ships." I mean, it is against federal law. We do as much as we can, but again, it's enforcement, it's, I, you know, we, I, we can't, we can only go so far.
So Mark, do you have any signs on the building in regard to law concerning public consumption?
Yes, yes, that, and then we even tell people not to park at the, we have a problem with people trying to park at the federal building. We tell them, "Do not park at the federal building," you know? So we try to, like I said, be as respectful as we can to the city's wishes, absolutely.
Thank you. Dave.
Yeah, I, you know, thinking back, I think we were pretty lenient when we allowed Kooz establishments. Because our original intent was none until the borough put those maps out there, and they almost guaranteed us there was no holes in them, and there was at least two holes. So I think that, to me, we, we can live a little bit longer with this two, and as far as, you know, the law enforcement folks, I, I know they're busy and this is probably a minor thing until somebody gets hurt, but I get a number of people after me all the time saying, "Why don't you do something about this over here, over there, and over there?" And you can't chase everybody smoking a cigarette on the street, and even though now it's going to be totally legal to smoke outside here anywhere. So I think that we've had a discussion, in my opinion, it's a hint of discussion.
Ken.
Well, first of all, I, I think that the regulatory approach to drugs is definitely the way to go rather than to outlaw it. I am particularly sensitive to secondhand smoke. I don't like, since legalization of marijuana, you can smell marijuana pretty much everywhere in the downtown. I live downtown, you know, I, I walk home, I smell pot everywhere. That's not working for me. I, I think that this whole thing is infringing on my right to breathe clean air and not to, to be smelling secondhand pot smoke. I think the discussion to have more pot dispensaries is ludicrous until we figure out how to properly regulate the ones that we have that protects the rights of people such as myself and others, who feel that if you want to use drugs, you should do whatever you want to, but don't affect me. I mean, if you want to smoke or if you want to eat edibles, go somewhere where it has no chance of affecting my person, my safety at all. You know, if you want to have three pot dispensaries and everybody has, you know, their right amount of pills to take, and then, you know, I, I don't think that that, I mean, I work in construction, and I can tell you that OSHA would not like any of this, the idea that the whole thing is unsafe. We already have people being run over. I can tell you that I drive a lot with my job, and I can tell you that the traffic is horrendous, the pedestrian traffic and all the things that are moving on around us is dangerous as it is. And I think that, I think, like I said, I'll back up to my original comment, that regulatory approach is a good one, and I think that we need to look closer at the regulations that we have now. You know, I think that, you know, we're talking about where to locate these things. I don't think it's a great idea to put pot dispensaries in the middle of the busiest place in Alaska. I, I, I'm not in favor of additional stores until we figure this out. That's all I got.
So, first of all, in regards to the current operators, I appreciate anything they can do to help with the concerns that some have been expressed here today. I think they have followed their regulations in regards to being operators. I think that the two that we have have heard nothing in regards to anybody having complaints about not having enough marijuana or something. I mean, I think they've met the needs of the community, and I, quite frankly, don't see where there's a need for another retail store at this particular point in time. And I know that the tourism is a big attract in regards to that, but I'm still somewhat conservative about the impacts and how we manage those individuals on the street. We have congestion as it is, and we have some real safety concerns when we have people walking right up to a busy traffic street like we have here on Front Street. So I think that I move slowly on those kind of things. When we started this whole thing on legalized marijuana, I think we missed the boat on medical marijuana. I think there is a place for that, and I think that the recreational shops right now, how will some of that serve some of that community? So I think you're right, it'd be Kooz having a conversation. Personally, I think we're probably finding where we're at right now. Dave.
Yeah, just a couple more comments. One, I got a phone call today from a person, and we had a discussion on this, and they've done a lot of research, what's going on in Colorado and Washington, and one of the things they brought up was that apparently Alaska has no way of measuring an impaired driver, except by observations. I think that the police department could probably confirm that, so maybe we need to push the state to say, "Take a blood test, you got so much in there, then you're impaired, you're in trouble." Because right now, you stop them and it's a guess. The other thing I would say, and it's a little bit off the side subject, but Judy made the comment about people smuggling alcohol back on a ship, they do. I've watched them do it. Well, I know where they load them up at and they take them. Trouble is, marijuana's not sold on the ship, alcohol is, and they're doing it to save money. It's not to sneak it on for other purposes than to drink it, because it's expensive on the ship, it's cheaper out here on the shore. So, but it's, they're, like I say, it's, marijuana's not sold on the ship, alcohol is.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway.
It's not a message.
Judy did just a...
Just that, I mean, I get it, but people are doing it anyway. I mean, people, people are smoking marijuana behind the mall, they drink behind the mall, they smoke downtown. I don't know that we can, maybe there's more of it, I haven't really noticed that big of an increase. I don't want another pot shop, only because, I mean, I hear daily about, you know, we didn't do anything about all these jewelry stores. I don't want it to be baubles and bongs downtown. I really think that we need to give some more thought to how we plan this out, and I don't think we've done a good job of doing that. I think we've got two now that we haven't had any complaints, things seem to be working well. I think we need to just stay where we're at right now and give it some more time.
Just one more question. Do we know what the borough has for their limits out in the borough? Because they have one out in the borough now, so that's three total.
I have a spreadsheet.
I don't know if they eliminate it.
So, there's another...
They can CUP dozens if they want.
Right, so...
And they will.
The borough has a spreadsheet, you know, somebody gave it to me, I don't have it right now, but you can ask them.
Yeah.
So you have no motion? Thank you for the discussion. With this on item three, discussion of prohibited onsite consumption endorsement to the marijuana retail store license, Councilmember Zingy.
That in thousands, ten minutes, it's work. I just, I mean, I don't know, I want to have this discussion, because you know, I've been told by, I spoke to a lot of young people the last couple of days about marijuana and how it gets smoked, and they were telling me, and I have no reason not to believe this, but that they actually approach people coming out of the pot shops who want to smoke marijuana, and they bring them home, believe it or not, because some of the tourists don't want to consume it on the street, and so they'll pay people they don't even know a hundred bucks or whatever it is. Yeah, it's a business out there. I mean, I was shocked to hear that, so, and this was after I'd already talked to Mark, and I was like, "Maybe you do about this." I mean, it is kind of shocking that people are doing this, and I heard it from more than one young person. And these are people between the ages of 20, 26. And so, I mean, I don't know how, you know, big of a deal it is, but they are doing it, and I just don't know, I worry about when they say how much is too much, and how it takes longer for it to take effect with some people than others. I'm really concerned about that, because I, I think if you're, if you have, what is it, 10, 10 milligrams? And you can buy that how many times while they're there, one time? So if they say, "Stay 30 minutes," and they walk out of there and it doesn't hit them until an hour, what does that mean? I mean, I just, I, I kind of think it's a good idea, but I just don't, I think we need to do more, look, we need to talk more about it, figure out more how it's going to work, I don't know.
Mark.
Yeah, I agree with Judy. On this one, I, I got a couple of concerns, particularly driving and pedestrians out there after they've consumed and then left the facility. Hundred percent of people that consume onsite have to get to the next place some way. Some might take cabs, Uber, whatever, some might walk. We know about our wet, dark, rainy streets. If alcohol is any kind of a model, and it probably would be, and my little store does install all of those inhibitors for people that have had DUIs, I can tell you, it's a growth industry, because there's a lot of that going on out there. I would have to think that X percentage, and I can't quantify it, might be willing to drive while, drive while high. So, I think we would need some, some more data and some answers to the, the public safety aspect before we could make an intelligent decision. And you're right, I checked with the police department, there is no standardized test like there is for alcohol. So it's a field sobriety test, if they fail, they take them to the police station, and then they can request a blood draw, and then they let them go, and it takes weeks to get the results.
Dan Lee and Sam.
Just a bit of perspective from, I teach the class, the alcohol DUI class, and which also includes marijuana. You don't see that many marijuana people because they got busted for DUI. However, it takes, I believe it was four hours for it to completely come out of your system, based on studies, it literally, where they put people in simulators to see how long and how they did. And the issues with marijuana is that you're literally like tunnel driving. You're not perf, you're not looking both ways or the sides. So my issue with it, and I know people are doing it already, it's happening, I've seen so many people hotboxing down the street, even up on Fifth Avenue, coming out of the high school. So it's happening, it's just, and unfortunately, I believe it's only a matter of time before we do have an, an accident of some kind. My issue with onsite is because a lot of people have the misconception that they drive better under the influence, that we're going to have more people driving home after they've gone to an establishment, and maybe it doesn't hit them right off the bat, and they're fine, and they feel fine, and they have a certain tolerance level, but their tolerance levels are different. Their physical tolerance level versus their brain tolerance are going to be, are two different animals. And my worry is that our, we're not, if anything, there needs to be more education in the fact that no matter what substance you're taking, whether it's alcohol, prescription drugs, or marijuana, and it, you shouldn't be driving on it, because that's, if you're under the influence or intoxicated on those items, you can get a DUI.
Dan.
I'd like to hear from the police chief. They're sitting down here, the phone's in the background. How can the police not interpret this while they're, while we have the police chief sitting right here?
He was waving back here earlier. I'm Eric Mattson, I'm the deputy chief for the police department. So, in response to some of the, the discussion that's going on, certainly there's the, if we're addressing onsite consumption right now, you know, there's, there's a mechanism right now, you know, the data that I can work off is bars or, you know, where people consume alcohol. We have a lot of data, we know what a measured drink is, we know we have .08. We have a lot of information, we have a lot of data, we have past arrests, cases, case law. With, with marijuana, it's, it's a fairly new standard where it's been legalized, and people are going to have to, if they onsite consume, like Mr. Flora was saying, they're going to have to get somewhere, whether they walk, get a ride, take a cab, or take the risk and try and drive home, but we still need to show impairment, as similar as a DUI. If we smell alcohol, we'll have a conversation about it. If they show signs of impairment, we continue the investigation. Certainly the same would fall for, for marijuana impairment, or driving high, I think is, Department of Public Safety has keyed that phrase. So that's, that's kind of the mechanism as we go, we see if there's impairment. DUI, there's some signs that you can see, typically, not always, the pupils get dilated, their heart rate, their blood pressure goes up, but their response is slower, their speech is slower. Their speech is slower, they don't react as quick. And that's the problem when they start driving is, when there's impairment, there becomes problems. Whether it's, you know, vehicle versus pedestrian, vehicle versus a fixed object, or vehicle versus vehicle. I mean, there's problems when people get behind the wheel impaired. So it's, it's a, it's a huge risk if somebody's going to try that, so...
So with marijuana, if, if you suspect impairment, they have their keys in their hand, now they're driving under the influence or something.
Sure.
If they test them, what is the level that you consider they are impaired? I think the federal standard is zero.
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know what the measured amount is. I know that the, the few cases that we've had for a DUI, whether it's marijuana or some other intoxicant, is, you know, we, we have a standardized field sobriety test. Once they fail those, we bring them back to the police department. Even if it's marijuana, we have them do the breathalyzer, and most likely, they'll blow a zero percent. But we still have evidence of impairment, whether that was driving, an accident, they failed the, the tests, you know, the, the one-leg stand, the walk and turn. They just are not functioning like they should be to be behind a vehicle. So at that point, we'd request a search warrant from a judge and ask for blood. We'd seize the blood. If it was granted, that blood gets sent off to a lab, and we wait for months. Once that blood comes back, we have a measurable amount, and then we send it to the DA's office and request either a summons or a warrant, and proceed with DUI.
So Colorado's is five milligrams. So milligrams in their system that would coincide to the point oh eight. That's what Colorado's is.
Judy?
How many times have you stopped people and had to do that procedure, send blood to the crime lab for marijuana use, I'm talking?
I don't have an exact number. I, I know just of a handful of cases. Not, it's not many.
Anything else? Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
So Mitch?
Yes, sir?
With the present marijuana laws passed by the State of Alaska in regards to, I guess, the granting of onsite consumption, whether we take action now or not, do the local communities still have the option to say yes or no?
That can be done, that can be done by ordinance. There's nothing in there that tells me, you know, it couldn't even be done with existing business. They left an awful lot of local control in the area. I know the council's been concerned, and I think rightly so, when this first law came about. You know, that we hurry up and have it in place so that people wanting to get into the business had a clear signal of what we were going to do.
So...
It seems to me to be really in flux, at this juncture at the state level also.
I think longer the community had the option of saying yes or no, I think that's the important thing. Whether you do it blanketly or you do it by case by case, I guess. And I, and I think that right now, it's unsure, like they said on the edibles thing, they got it out for public comment now. So it's not like we have to make a decision tonight, but we should probably think about crafting ordinance in regards to the ability of the community to say yes or no on a case by case basis.
I, I would offer this, Your Honor. You know, and I'll, I'll check if I'm wrong. I'm fairly confident that we would have time to prohibit onsite consumption. I don't know that it could be done necessarily on a case by case basis absent the grounds that we have to check under our code or under state law, which mirrors pretty closely the alcohol licensing. You know, had there been, you know, a history of problems with that particular establishment, or, you know, they hadn't paid their taxes, hadn't fixed their plumbing, that type of thing, right? So if, if we would not ban it, and you have particularized facts as a particularized application, I think that's available, the other thing would be to ban or limit it. And the cities have flexibility there.
Thank you. Yeah.
Can you confirm what Mr. Woodward said about neither of the shops currently would qualify for the smoking? So if, if we do nothing right now, it really, it wouldn't...
Well, he tells me they, they don't have, and I believe it's a freestanding building.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And they don't?
And I confess, I, I just know what I read in the paper too, but it looks like they're going for freestanding building.
I just wondered if you knew the regulations that well, to know if they qualified or not, if that was true. I mean, people get up to the podium and say whatever they want, and I'm not saying you said that. I'm just saying, you're our attorney, so I wondered if you read the regulations. Just got it in place, I understand that two weeks ago.
I hadn't read that part of the regulation, although, all the media reports and everything else, I don't have a reason to doubt that. You have to have a freestanding facility for the onsite consumption. You know, the business owner tells me he doesn't have that, I fully believe that's true. If, if I'm, if I'm totally wrong, I'll tell you, okay?
Okay, yeah. I wouldn't want to support something that bans it right now, but...
Judy?
But right now, it's still a public comment, and we still have time to kind of get more information and look at how it would work, if it would work. Like, when do, when's the deadline?
Yeah, what is the...
Public comment's not going to go out, so we're not even going to have it this summer.
Okay, so we've got a lot of time to, good, so we can make a informed...
Dan?
I, I, I believe in the democratic process. I think we should ask the voters in the next, the next election, if we should put this on the ballot, should we allow onsite consumption of edibles?
I think that's a good idea.
In, in our local businesses. I mean, I, I personally have, have my feelings about it, and I can tell you how I would vote. But I think that we have time. I think we should put it out to the community. I think it's an important decision, and I think it's something that we should consider.
So one of the questions I would have, and we probably need to run it down a little bit. When they talk about a freestanding building, does it have to be attached or on the same property? Could they not have a building two doors down the street and call that a smoking shop?
It has to be attached. It has to be attached to the retail store.
Yeah.
Separated by a door.
Okay.
But it can't be attached to any other buildings or apartments above.
It could, it could be on deck though.
No.
No, you can't even apply for the, the endorsement if you don't even have a freestanding building. So the deck doesn't matter.
So the only building that can is the one out north.
Yep.
Yeah, they're the only ones because they're, they have nothing attached to them, yeah.
The one you have to drive to get to.
Yeah, of course.
Oh, the irony.
There are buses.
Sorry.
Maybe they'll, maybe they'll add at time.
So what is the, uh, the will of the council?
Are we going to make a motion this morning?
No, the motion, we discussed it.
Yeah, we can't do a motion, we, we, we know that there's a discussion, so we can't really motion. We could, but it would be...
Do you want staff to come back with a motion in regards to putting on a public count?
Yes, I can.
We have four hands for that? One, two, three?
Man, the pressure's there.
Peer pressure.
Did you want a, for an ordinance allowing onsite consumption, onsite smoking? Or none of the above, or...
Consumption.
We all want?
Onsite consumption, right?
Well, consumption.
Well, if we got time, just...
Onsite consumption would include both edibles and smokable material. And that would be in accordance with the law.
What they already do onsite consumption of edibles, do they not?
No, but they can step out the door and eat it, and he has no control over that.
That's close enough.
Yeah, just, yeah.
So it would be whether we would prohibit the onsite, any form of onsite on this consumption of cannabis type of...
Correct. Yeah, your name. That's what it would be?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion of tobacco twenty-one, prohibiting the sale and distribution of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes and other alternative nicotine products to persons under the age of twenty-one. Council, Gatenver.
This is going to be a long discussion, as the...
Can we take a, yeah.
We need a break.
One break?
We missed it every two hours, and this is, we're just discussing things. Starting to get tired of this.
Thanks, babe.
And I brought pie.
Again, item seven A four, discussion of tobacco twenty-one. That would be you.
No pressure.
So, um, okay, so basically, this isn't really putting law enforcement in. Actually, I should have Terrence just come up and talk about it a little more. But one of the things that stuck with me, just to give a little feedback, because I really, I think this is a good idea, is I remember my dau, one of my daughter's friends coming over upset because she had turned nineteen, and she had a friend that, the only reason she hung out with her was because she was buying, she could go buy cigarettes for her. And she even said she wished that it wasn't older, because it just puts a lot of peer pressure on some of the older teens when their friends want them to go buy for them.
Yeah, that's, that's very true. Did you want me to talk about anything?
Well, I guess just restipulate the fact that it's just a, more of a retail store requirement, not a, like, nobody gets a ticket, nobody goes...
So, yeah, so as far as possession of tobacco, if you're, if you're nineteen or twenty, and now you're twenty-one, it's only a violation of state statutes if you're under nineteen. So that you're not creating a new crime. It's a point-of-sale law. It's telling the stores they cannot sell to minors, the tobacco products, to anyone under the age of twenty-one. It, it's, it's found to be incredibly efficient. And to the enforcement thing, something triggered, you know, Mr. Bergeron had a concern about the police stuff, and I just talked to Deputy Chief Mattson about this. When I was doing the drug-free communities work, one of the things that we were encouraged to do in our communities to reduce, like, underage drinking, is the Coalition does compliance checks. So the Coalition gets people that are underage to go in and attempt to buy at these stores at least every three months at every, at every location. And then they, they share the results with the police, and it's not like something that's going to be persecuted. But it keeps those people, you know, you, you, if they don't card that kid, then you, you have a conversation right there with the store manager or something. And you're just building this, you just want them to not sell to the kids, right? So would your law need to have teeth? Of course it would. If they are selling, and the police, and they fail a compliance check, you want to have a punishment like the state does for selling to minors, people under nineteen.
So what did Sitka implement on that?
You know, I'm not sure exactly. I know that they, they didn't have as much teeth in the enforcement part as they wanted to, but in Sitka, you can't sell to someone under twenty-one tobacco product, and Anchorage is about to pass their tobacco twenty-one also. So it's, it's definitely something that doesn't create a big enforcement burden and is, is highly effective. Any questions?
All right. Yes, Sam?
I'd like to hear from the chief.
Eric Mattson again, deputy chief. Is, what would you like to know, I guess, or any specific questions?
I'm reading your memo, and you say that the, the State of Alaska would not enforce this. If we went to twenty-one, then it would fall on the Ketchikan City Police to enforce. And that's something that you haven't done?
As far as my understanding, so the, the tobacco, the state enforcement would be under nineteen, selling to under nineteen-year-olds. If we were to pass an ordinance to, now you can't sell to under twenty-one, then it would fall on us to do that enforcement. If we were going to write a new ordinance, if there was a citation, what the fine is, and then to be able to, I guess, at least have an ordinance to where we would, you know, and then we'd have to find the parameters, what, what exactly were we trying to get? And what stores are we going to? If we go to the bars, then we run into a little bit of a different problem, where now you have a minor on a licensed premise, which is actually a misdemeanor crime. So certainly if we pass an ordinance, we would make it work, and we would do what we could with it. I mean, that's, yeah, so...
Thank you.
Maybe it's said somewhere in our packet, but do any other communities in Alaska have that?
Yeah.
They have?
Sitka's done, done it, Petersburg.
Ragble's working on it, and Anchorage is about to pass theirs.
Okay.
And majority of the states have started it, and just, it's, basically it translates into fewer deaths, premature deaths.
I'm all for it. I just don't, I think, once the state does it, then it's up to them to...
Yeah.
To, for the, when they run the inspections and they send a eight, nine, eighteen-year-old, then they would just send a twenty-year-old. But if we pass, if we put it in our books and pass it as a law or resolution in our books, then local law enforcement has to do it, and we'd have to specify how that looks and everything. So obviously, it's going to be more money. I'm all for the, the age change, though.
The interesting thing about substances, especially even tobacco, is that the older a kid is, when they start, the less likely they are to become addicted. So most people who become addicted to a substance, be it tobacco, or alcohol, or marijuana, or prescription drugs, start at a younger age. If you get, the statistics is that most people start at the age of fourteen, which has actually dropped to even twelve, it's getting younger. And at, by the time they're eighteen, they're going into treatment. So the idea is that this would...
Ma'am?
I, I think the vendors would self-enforce it. And I think that, I don't think our expectation would be for the police to have sting operations unless some extraordinary circumstance came forward. And I, I think that this, however imperfect, does send a message. I think it could pass the opportunity to save lives and to make, make our, you know, community less smoker-friendly, and I, and I think that, I think we should support it.
All right. Mark?
I've got a question for Terrence, if I could, please. So what is going on at the state level to just make twenty-one the statewide?
There's nothing, nothing at this point, no. We, we spent five years lobbying with American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network for the smoke-free, smoke-free law. Any single committee chair in Alaska can stop anything, and there just isn't the will from the American Cancer Society people to even start a new fight at this point. Yeah.
So how about in U.S.?
In the U.S., Senator McConnell has said he's going to introduce tobacco twenty-one legislation for the whole nation, but we know how they're playing nice in Congress right now, the two sides. So while it's promising...
Is Kentucky is going to do it?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so there'll be some, the big fear on that nationally is, if it's being supported by big tobacco, what's the loopholes? And the loophole that they're going to try and do is called preemption. Alaska's one of very few states that didn't agree to preemption, and that's why we can do tobacco taxes in Ketchikan. That's why we can do these laws. Most states, like this tobacco tax that passed here, we're one of like twenty cities in the entire United States that even could do it. Or, or not that could do it, but are in states that can do it. There's only twenty, like twenty smoke, tobacco taxes at the municipal level in the whole country. Illinois, New York, Alaska, and I think there's one other state that didn't do the preemption part. So big tobacco, we'll, we'll try and do something, so, yeah.
So for me, one of the things is, these are young adults, nineteen and twenty-one. You know, they, they have the right to vote, they can go into the military, they can do all these other kinds of things. And we're going to regulate their ability to buy cigarettes because there are those individuals that choose to buy, whether it's alcohol or tobacco, and give it to youth. When I was in high school, the grandkids' age was twenty-one. My friends never had a problem getting alcohol.
Wait a minute, wasn't it eighteen?
Eighteen.
It dropped, it was later.
Yeah.
It was eighteen when I was in high school.
Yeah, okay, that's, okay.
So, you know, we may change this law... So, you know, we may change this law and, and do things like that, but I think there are some people that smoke, doesn't make them bad people. I, I don't like to have it, I don't smoke, I'd be happy if nobody smoked. But the fact is, is at some point, we're stepping in and regulating an adult's ability to do something adults may like. You know, and so I, there's a certain part of me that says that we're infringing on somebody, the person that, you know, doing what he's supposed to do, he just eats one.
Haven't we done that all night?
We kind of sort of.
Would you do that on marijuana, would you do that on alcohol?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's tough, dude.
So this twenty-one, they can't buy cigarettes unless they're twenty-one, can they sell cigarettes if they're working at the store? Will now the people selling cigarettes, do they have to be twenty-one?
I do not know. But, well, you guys can write in it however you want to write it. There's other, there's a lot of model policies out there. I don't know how it works with servers for alcohol, probably maybe mirror that, I'm not sure. Yeah, it's a good question.
Dick?
Yeah, Terrence, you mentioned that you would be doing, as a group, some follow-up with, what, checking the stores to see what they're doing. Would the group be willing to work with those retailers to educate them on the benefit of doing this, where they might be more willing to, to do it if we, if we pass something like this?
I, I think they don't want to get in trouble. You look at what happens to Walmart when they fail, they sell to someone under nineteen, it's a cumulative effect. The first time you get caught, it's like if you lose your license, it's stuff like forty-five days. I can't remember what, how much they figured they lost, like a hundred and ten thousand dollars the last time they lost their ability to sell for six weeks or whatever it was. The next time, it's probably a year they lose. So they just card everybody, and that's what we want to encourage. We're not trying to punish the retailers, we don't want them to get in trouble, we want them to card every single person and never sell to who they're not supposed to sell to. And that's how they keep out of trouble. But yeah, we would totally, the whole idea of the, the compliance checks from, from like a coalition or whatever, is to literally immediately educate them. We're not law enforcement, we can't punish them, we just say, hey, your, your kid here at the front counter, she just sold, while she had fifteen people waiting to buy pizza slices at a Ward Coke, she just sold to someone underage, and, and now you can deal with her however you want. Instead of having the compliance Joe Darnell come in and say, you just sold, we're now taking your ability to sell for six months away.
I think they have a similar program for alcohol.
Yes.
Where law enforcement would go, want to do the same, and it's more of an education.
Yeah.
Unless it's a second offense.
But I agree with you, it, it is hard to sit here and be the morality police. But when you look at alcohol, you look at marijuana, you look at tobacco, of those three, I would think there might be a consensus that without a doubt, tobacco is at least as harmful as the other two, probably more so. So we, we go through a process, talking about, you know, the marijuana, should we or shouldn't we, totally understandable. If we're going to insert government into people's private lives on any of these types of substances, this one seems to be the most obvious. There seems to be no benefit, no health benefit to consumption. If statistical data shows that less people will smoke if they're starting longer, I don't see what the downside is. You're right, you can go in the military and you get shot at at eighteen, but you can't go buy a beer. I don't know why we wouldn't lump cigarettes in with the same category.
This, this is the resolution Ketchikan any community just passed to support tobacco twenty-one, and they put a lot of their own statistics, they gathered some data. And one of the things was that it leads to, it would lead to Ketchikan's overall tobacco use rate to drop twelve percent, is, is what, one of their studies was, because you're stopping people, like generally was saying, of initiating use to begin with. And then I had the state Department of Vital Statistics run some numbers on the causes of death of Ketchikan people. And in twenty seventeen, of the hundred, I could be off by one or two on these numbers, of the hundred and nine people who died in Ketchikan in twenty seventeen, fifty-seven of them were from tobacco-type of diseases, strokes, heart attacks, heart disease, and cancers.
And we're the highest in the state for tobacco-related cancers. The last time I checked, it's the, yeah. Yeah, last time I checked the numbers, it was, we're number one.
Yeah, the cooperative.
Oh, no.
Why do you look at that? You're being a great job to enforcement.
Are you getting home?
Well, what happens if you, if you ban it, you change it to twenty-one in the city and you don't change it to twenty-one in the borough?
Right, right.
This guy wants to say.
Mr. Robbins, he was talking about Ward Coke, and I'll be clear, it's, we stop at city limits with the city ordinances. The Coast Guard base falls within city limits, I don't know that we're going to have any jurisdiction within that shop. I mean, that's all duty-free, it's all the, the PXs are, so, I mean, that's.
Although in favor of sending it to the Cooperative Relations Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Every son.
You're so welcome.
All right, bring this to item five. Discussion on taking a formal appraisal of municipally-owned Ketchikan medical facility and property engaged.
I have to ask, I thought I put this as an agenda item, but, yeah. The other, the last meeting, I thought I had said, when we were asked, not an agenda item, but maybe I missed.
My understanding from the last meeting was you requested that it be an agenda item and that's.
Yeah. Oh, I thought it was just a discussion item.
Yeah, so it is a discussion item, and we'd have to, if we made a, a motion to move forward with that, or give forehands to the manager to say, to do that, then we could move that forward. I guess my question is, is to what end are we going to use the appraisal?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Well, I, I, you know, the, the council can take, you know, action to just ask you to go get an appraisal on it, we can move that forward, but I, I guess, to what end are we going to use it?
Well, my recommendation to the council would be, given your earlier action with the ECG contract, before taking any action, I'd like to talk to ECG about this and, and see how they view it fitting into an overall strategy.
And the only reason I brought it up is because one of the things that we kept hearing, and not to start a fight, but all the, all the materials and all the stuff that they put into the building, and what is, and because if we ever were to look at charging rent, we have no way to figure out what that rent would look like, because we don't have an appraisal on the building. So, yeah, and just talking to Carl, we had to, that we'd have to have an appraisal to even come up with a rental number.
Yeah, Dick?
I think Public Works Director provided us a pretty good appraisal. Ballpark figure, that's all we need. We're going to set the rent if we want to set a higher rent.
Well, I think, I think that, you know, as Carl, Carl mentioned, it's going to be a discussion in regards to, as we move forward with, you know, whatever type of lease it is, with contractors, how important it is to the, to the endgame. So I think, and if there's no objection, we'll just let Carl bring that up in a discussion and come back with this as a recommendation.
Bring this down to item B, Ketchikan Public Utilities recruitment of a position of electric division manager. Carl?
There's a motion.
There's a motion there?
I move the city council authorized the general manager and human resources manager to initiate recruitment efforts for the appointment of a new electric division manager to succeed Andy Donato upon his retirement, effective March thirtieth, twenty twenty. Action, we're taking an action.
Hey, yes, official action. Gage?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory, because you're retiring, you're replacing.
I don't second that.
I just think we need to get the process started now. Ideally, I'd like to have a few months' transition between Mr. Donato and whoever the successor candidate would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we need to go ahead and get started on, on a recruitment. My objection is, there's two words in here, six to nine months' transition period, ain't no way I'm going to support over three months. So we'll see where we are when we get it, but that's going to be too much money, three months. If we hire a qualified person, if they can't get it in three months, we don't get it.
Thank you. Yeah.
I just want to, I, I am not enthusiastic about him leaving, by the way, I'm just enthusiastic about making the motion, but I, I am not happy with his.
I would make him pie, too.
So the motion stipulates the number of months?
No.
No, it does not.
It does not, but it's in the body of it.
All right. I agree, I think transition planning and getting an early start on it's a good, good plan, so there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Zimmy?
Yes.
Far?
Yes.
Moose?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Thank you. So Carl, that, is that one of those positions you have to post in-house first and then go out with, or?
Or I'll do a concurrent posting, both internally and externally.
And is there anything in regards to the job description that needs to be updated?
I don't believe so, but I will check with the HR manager.
Yeah, might as well get it done at one time, if that, if that's the case. Brings us down to vouchers, which I don't see any, and then brings us down to managers' report. Carl?
Just a couple. Mr. Mayor, as we did last year, and you can hear what's going on outside as we speak, unless the council directs otherwise, it would be my intent to let everybody know that I again intend this summer not to enforce the restriction on tour vehicles using third avenue bypass. I just think it makes, makes sense, so. I did want to note to the council that with the chamber stepping out of the annual Christmas lighting, we were successful in getting authorization from the General Services Administration to use the tree at the federal building. And as the assistant manager noted in her transmittal memorandum, I think this would be a nice opportunity to put out a solicitation for public art to get a topper for the tree. I don't think that's something that we'll be bringing forward, and I just wanted to note that to the council.
So Carl, that, that's, I don't know, five or six times the tree we've ever had, you're going to need a budget for appropriate lighting and et cetera, yeah?
We need more lights and all that, we'll be working all that up, so.
All right, all right. Great tree, I love that tree.
I wanted to give a shout-out to Kim Simpson and the employees, both in her division and KPU, relative to the recent programming awards that Ketchikan Public Utilities received. Again, I would just reiterate that this community is very fortunate to have a telecommunications division that can produce the local content that it does, from sports to wearable art. It's, it's just something that a lot of communities just don't have. And the last thing, Councilmember Isom, it's been a pleasure and a privilege working with you, and I wish you well in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City clerk file?
Did you want to talk about the moose?
Oh, did we bypass the moose? We might have bypassed it, where was it at? Oh, it's laid on the table, yeah. And Carl, we brought this forward, they're in compliance, except for there's an issue with.
They, they're in compliance with what we had issues with originally, but since so much time has elapsed, they are now out of compliance with their first quarterly taxes, which wasn't an issue at the time, and they paid everything we asked them to pay, but now they owe for the first quarter. So the Alcohol and Marijuana Board, it was on their agenda, they gave them additional one hundred and eighty days for us to file a motion to protest or not, but that's the timeframe we have, so we.
According to what you had told me earlier, they said they'd pay them up within the next couple of weeks, I think it could wait till the next meeting.
I did talk to Mr. Delandon, this is morbid, I think, but, yeah, and he said they were going to be paying them the next couple of weeks, so it wouldn't hurt to.
Hold off?
Hold off till the meeting the sixteenth, see what their plans are.
If there's no objections, we'll do that, please notify them that we will be taking it up at the next meeting.
Okay.
I think that would be appropriate. All right, sorry about that, so that brings us on to city clerk's file.
Other than that, none, Your Honor?
City attorney's file?
None, Your Honor.
Future agenda items? Mayor and county clerk, Mark?
Julie, it's been a pleasure, best of luck to you out there in Fairbanks, hope all goes well, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Dick?
Yeah, I was thinking we should always move to Fairbanks, because we're going to miss you so much that, you know, we're just, we're just going to have to go, we're just going to have to show up, too, so, so get a nice large place, so we can all just have, we need a big hot tub, get us some legal Fairbanks meetings, we will miss you, thank you.
I'll spray you.
Sam?
It's been a pleasure staying with you, best of luck to you, and good luck in your future. That's all I have, thank you.
Kelly?
Julie, it's been a pleasure, but there is no way in hell I will ever move to Fairbanks, I live in the Arctic.
She'll, she'll be back.
Yeah, and I don't want to hear a complaint out of you for the whole two years you're there. Let's see if she can hold her tongue.
Dick?
Yeah, Julie, thanks for your service to us and the whole town, because you've been busy in this whole place, and I hope you enjoy the cold weather.
Not just cold, dry.
Definitely.
Well, I'm going to say my piece, and then you can have the last word. Do you like to go in duty? Rudy?
Hit me?
Just thanks for everything you've done, not just here, but in the community. You're, you know, you volunteer with a lot of nonprofits, and those are big shoes to fill, so thank you for watching, Phil.
Thank you.
Pass me a thorn to your head.
Yeah, I think everybody has, has stated, well, thank you for your service, and it is, it is going to be a loss to the community, because you have been involved in so many different things throughout the community, and I think you're going to be an addition to Fairbanks, and I know that you're not going to let any grass grow on your feet, you're going to be working at something in those particular places, and like everybody said, when you, when you pick that house, it makes sure it has a spare bedroom in the place where you can hang a moose or something, right?
Or two.
Yeah, or two.
Okay, briefly, but not so briefly, I, I want to thank you all for the opportunity. We've settled in North Pole, actually, where at City Hall, they have a Christmas tree in each office, and things seem a lot more fun there, so, but I don't plan on getting involved in politics right away, anyway. And as far as filling my shoes, I, I have ownership in a lot of the nonprofits that I volunteer here in town, so I, for the past three months, I've been going to people and having certain people strategically take over my place. I hate dropping the ball, and there's certain things that I do, do every year for nonprofits, and so I have made sure that for the most part, there's people picking up the slack. I, I felt like I needed to do that, so thank you. And thank you all for being, I, I don't always agree with everyone, I think I've disagreed with all of you at one time or another, but I think that's, and we can come together and still make decisions together. I think that's important, and with this body, I felt, I feel like it's done it, so thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have an executive session.
I know, you can't have ruined it for nineteen years.
The executive session is pie, have some more.
Coming to it, Jerry.
Manager.